Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, go right to, are there any items that need to be added or amended to the agenda? And the answer to that is yes. For K, delegate for V L T C town fair. And L, fire contract?
It's really the, uh, it's the-
With Fersberg?
Well, it's really all of them, Mike. So it's, um, it's actually to, my request to revise the revenue budget in the, for the fire department pertaining to the, uh, the contracts with the other municipalities.
What should we call it? Just-
Fire contracts?
It's okay.
That'll, we'll build from there. Um, any other additions? Anything on the present agenda that needs to be deferred? And I'll just point out, because Jay was already on the previous one, uh, we just have to show it and it's gonna be deferred. So we'll just skip over that when we get to it. Um, any visitors? Uh, not, they're not gonna speak tonight, I don't believe, no. Uh, the gentleman on the right is here to earn some merit badges for, uh, Boy Scouts. Just so that you know what he's here for. And he has to take a lot of notes, he says, so make sure you take and bring up a lot of subjects and say a lot of words. Only picking. And if you want some candy, you're free to come up and get it. Um, alright. Uh, approval of minutes for the Virgin City Council meeting dated September 12th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Lo made a motion. Do I have a second? Uh, Rennie got it out first. Um, any omissions, corrections? Yes, sir.
By way of disclosure, item B, uh, five B, rather, uh, my employer, Virtual Management Company does own property on North Street.
Okay.
Ninety-four, ninety-six.
Thank you. Ninety-four and ninety-six north. Thank you. For indicating that. Um, okay. Any other disclosures? Hearing none?
No disclosures.
Any other disclosures? Okay. Now, back to the minutes. Um, any omissions, corrections?
Two items on page two, second paragraph, third line down. Second line down, Chief Merkel advised he and the department are going to do the right thing rather than is. And on page three, I believe it would read better to say, City Manager Holly reported having discussed designated neighborhood development areas in the past to include additional land. The boundary of neighborhood development areas is usually one half mile. Is that correct, Mel?
It reads awkwardly.
Um, yeah. I think you're right. I think it should be the, what I was more hung up on was the first sentence, uh, because it's, because it doesn't make ref- but it does state further about the state agency administering, so I think that's fine.
Joan, you get those?
I got it.
Okay. Any other?
Page two, citizens' comments, sort of the middle, last line. If I said that no one comes to the meeting, I misspoke. I just meant to say it's rare that we have visitors.
Clarification. Any other ones? If not, how was in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Propose? So carried? Um, any questions on the warrants? See, everybody signed them. Yes, sir.
I would just encourage my city, uh, alder persons, um, that we be a little more judicious in reviewing the warrants between what is delivered to us on Friday and what we are signing on Tuesday night. Last, our last meeting, the warrant increased by over $700,000 and I didn't see a lot of scrutiny of that as we, uh, went through and, and signed on the warrant. So I would just ask that we be a little more diligent.
So, so one of the things-
Go for it.
Relative to, uh, Matt's comment about 700,000, obviously it's because we're paying the schools.
Right.
But there, but he is absolutely right. Uh, I can tell you that we do not have a purchase order system, alright? And therefore, the only way that bills gets, forgets, that a, that a bill gets reflected in our budgets is to pay a bill, alright? And so, when I, uh, when I put the bills together, uh, for the board on Friday, every bill, uh, that we have is entered unless there's some crazy bill that I don't understand and I'm, I don't really know the coding of it, alright? And by the time you get to Tuesday, I can tell you, like today, there was no bills in the mail, but there was bills in the mail on Monday and those get added. So, I think Mark's, uh, Matt's point here really is that, like tonight, the warrant, the first page is a signature sheet, you know, obviously feel free to, to take that clip off and take a look at the, the second page because the, the list, for instance, I've got the, the difference, what you're remarking about is what went out in your packet was 39,807. And Joan?
6,232.
Yeah. So, it's not like it's, I think what Matt's point is, it's not like it's $200 here. It's, I can tell you, there's, a lot can happen on a Monday and Tuesday before, before you, uh, before you sign that warrant, for sure.
Good point, Matthew. Thank you. Um, any other comments about the warrants? If hearing none, uh, the next one would be citizens' comments on items not otherwise on the agenda, and I'll just go down and fly through those fairly fast. Item A is reserved dock space for cruise ship. Item B is designate portion of North Street as a one-way street. Uh, C is review the finance management questionnaire. Uh, D is municipal plan grant sewer system. E is sewer rate increase. F is implementation of a credit card payment capability. Uh, G is downtown basin master plan implementation. H is a dog, a municipal dog park. I is amendment to the city ordinance, chapter four, section seven. Uh, place of, um, yeah, materials in public right of ways. Uh, J is sandwich boards, uh, and temporary signs in streets right of way, and this one's been requested to be deferred to the next meeting. An added item is item K, delegate for V L T C town fair, which is happening next week. L is gonna be talking about, uh, changing fire contracts. And then it goes on to, City Manager is FY 2018 budget report. Uh, that's A. B is capital improvement and special fund report. Uh, C is other topics of interest. Undermine, uh, report is local option tax, uh, swimming pool advisory group report evaluation process for City Manager and City Clerk. Uh, number of vessels for this year, I'll get into detail there. Eating on the green, Rennie's gonna speak to that. And I have a handout of something that I just got this afternoon about a conference that's coming up, not till November, but I think it's something that, uh, people ought to know about now. And, uh, of course, our next meeting is October 10th. And then, of course, last will be, I think I'll pick on somebody else adjourned tonight. So, that's the items. So, any, is anybody here to speak on any other items other than what I've mentioned? Shannon? Nope? Okay. Alright, so we'll get right under, underway and, um, let's, let's talk about, uh, let's start the story in case you don't know it. Um, Amy at the partnership got an email, correct me if I'm wrong, Rennie, uh, or a contact from a gentleman, uh, that wants to bring a cruise ship and park it at the city dock, a dinner, uh, and drink type setup. As some people know, uh, and they may have been on the council before, we approved it once before. So, the history is that, uh, not many people got off the bu- the ship, the vessel, um, and came into town. So, at that point, um, Amy thought that Mel and I should know about it, forwarded it to me and, uh, then some emails started floating back and forth, of which you have copies of. If you need to, uh, read those, that's fine. But now, we need to, uh, talk about, uh, reserve, do we, do we want to reserve dock space for, uh, a cruise ship? And does anybody wanna start? Rennie?
I'll start with some of the background. Because I thi- I think the, um, Moonlight Lady was the, uh, boat that came in, um, and I, I think it was when I was manager, actually. Um, and, um, it was a considerably larger boat than this one. I think this one is 51 feet and I think the Moonlight Lady was closer to 100, but, but it was, it was a big boat. Um, and at the time, they said that they would be serving dinner and cocktails and so on to their guests and their guests are overnight guests, so the, the boat would come up, dock, stay overnight and go back out. And, um, and so, but they said they had free time and they would be getting off the boat, maybe having lunch, um, and going up and seeing the shops. So, at the time, not only is it, I, I, I thought, and the council at the time, thought that it was good, even if that didn't occur, to have a boat like that with all of those people coming from someplace else, they get exposed to the city, maybe they'd come back after they see what is here. Um, and I don't really know, we never tracked to see how many people actually got off the boat and went in town. We re- we really didn't know whether that even occurred, but they did say that that probably would occur at the time. The only complaint that I recall from having the boat there was a complaint that when the boat was in, uh, port, uh, that it took up a lot of space on the dock, which then prohibited some other folks who had come up the river to dock, they may not have enough dockage space because the boat was so large and it took up so much dock space. And it also prohibited, um, uh, even mooring to a certain degree because the boat was large enough that it had to go out and turn around in the basin to go back out. So, um, uh, that, that was the complaint that I, I only received a couple of complaints about the fact of it tying up space, too much space on the docks.
There was one additional thing that I just remembered. Uh, a, it had to go in a specific spot because there was a larger amp connector that had to, it took so much power that it had to have a special connector to, uh, be able to plug into our electricity that we're supplying.
And they also paid to have, um, larger cleats put on to the docks so it would hold the, the boat. Um, so, that's what, that's what happened from before. Matt?
I'm not sure if I'm reading this wrong or if he's changed his operation, but he says, "I think the service out of Virgin's would be great," almost indicating that instead of us being a destination location, they would leave from Virgin's, which to me tips the conversation a little bit. You know, it's-
Reach out?
To, or tried to reach out, left a message, right?
Was it this guy?
This guy?
No.
Oh, who?
No. I haven't done anything with him.
I thought he made a phone call and tried to-
No.
Left a message.
No.
I think we should. Do we have contact information for him?
Well, he, this is his email here.
His phone number's on there as well.
Is this supposed to be a one-night thing or is he hoping to do this, like, more here permanently and have a continual?
I think we can shorten the conversation we're having here and just have the gentleman to one of our meetings and lay out all the facts at that one meeting. So, um-
Particularly since it's probably not gonna be until next year anyhow.
Yep.
It's probably plenty of space down at the dock right now.
Does anybody have any other discussion they wanna have on this or do we just wanna invite him to a, a meeting, uh, sometime November, December?
Well, my thoughts were, what, what part of the season are we talking, so?
Yeah, having him here would be able to answer all those questions.
Okay. We'll get an invite out to him and then we'll see when we can get him here. Okay. Uh, we're gonna go to item B, designation portion of North Street as a one-way street?
Do it again.
Okay. So, how this came about is that, actually, I was in Shannon's shop, Rain Tree, one day and, uh, she mentioned to me, "Well, I've got, I've got a couple of ideas for, um, some, uh, some changes." And, and one of the ideas was, "Did you ever think of, uh, making, uh, at least a portion of North Street one-way, um, going towards the post office, going that way, that direction?" Uh, which I guess would be so. Um, and, um, the, um, there was another idea, that one we'll, we'll deal with that some other date, but, but anyhow, this idea, um, I, I thought had some merit to it because, uh, North Street being as narrow as it is, uh, even though I, I didn't go out there and measure the, the width of the pavement, but I'm sure the width of the pavement is legally wide enough for two cars to pass, but lots of times, two cars will not pass each other, uh, particularly, uh, behind the, the city green where the, the cars are parked. Most often, you see one car stops and lets the other one come through, they don't cross each other, even though there is technically enough space for that to happen. Um, same thing going up North Street further, it's very, it's very tight. Um, and then, the other aspect of it is, when you're on North Street, uh, to go out onto Main Street, the visibility is poor. Um, and, um, had this not come up, and if nothing happens with this, I'd probably recommend that we, uh, take away at least one parking space on that corner, because when you get there, you can't see. Um, and so, I, I think it's a, it's a dangerous entry from, um, from North Street onto Main Street. So, given all of those things, at least in my mind, I thought it merited some discussion as to whether we should do something like this. Um, as you may have seen in the email from the mayor, um, that, um, it, it's kind of the, um, chicken and the, and the egg should, you know, I mean, in order to do this, we're, we're gonna have to send notices to everybody who may be impacted and get, uh, and basically have a hearing to go over, where, opposition, what are the problems and all of that stuff. Well, do you do that first and then discuss it with the council, or you discuss it with the council and then do that later? And I figured, well, it would be better for us to discuss it, the council to know about it first, and if you think it's a bad idea, then we don't take it any further, we don't spend the money or the time for the hearing and all of that stuff. And, but if you think it has some merit to go forward, then we could go with the rest of the, with rest of the process. That's as much as I know, and Shannon is here to ma- make any comment that she would like.
Shannon, would you like to make some comments now? Sure. Go for it.
So, North Street is something, I live on North Street, right on the back of, behind the water tower, I work on Main Street, I travel between the two all the time. Remember the accident I saw right in, in the middle? And so, the, all of this sort of traffic downtown is one of the things that, that's on everybody's minds that lives here and works here, is how do we make it better and, and better for pedestrians and drivers? And North Street is definitely narrow, especially when you consider most people have trucks and bigger cars up here, and so that's sort of like, it'd be great if we all had compact cars and you could get by very easily, but we don't, so. Um, I, I just started talking to different people in town and the police about all of these things and North Street was one of them, that it's horrible to go out onto Main Street, on North Street, you can't see either way because there's obstructive views both ways and it always is, is a struggle. That's why I already instinctively try to go down to Green Street and up to Main Street and that, creating that conditioning of traffic will create a better flow in town anyway because you're bringing people to the light instead of to a middle intersection where it's just harder for people to get in there. Um, it's also wide enough that you could have a sort of pedestrian way on that, that's a bike path slash one of those multipurpose, sort of like they do in Burlington with the orange line and then you have, so the people that are coming in don't have to go down to where it's really congested on Main Street, they can take North Street as a pedestrian way to the back of the park and then enter the park from there, instead of tying things up again, having all those bikers on Main Street. And then those people can also go down, um, the back way out to McDonough, which a lot of them do. Um, plus, you could turn the back parking spaces behind the park into parallel spaces, and not parallel, into diagonal spaces from parallel spaces. So you could actually double the amount of parking you have on the back of the park because then you would have the room to do that, because you're only creating one lane. So these are things that I see as a resident here of ways to make sort of things better for travel flow. You know, I know that there's the doctor's office and the dentist office right there at that one end, and they both have significant parking lot areas. And sure, it might add three minutes or two minutes to somebody's trip to have to go back around to Main Street, but again, they're going to have an easier time getting to where they need to go once they hit Main Street than if they went back out on North to go back out on Main.
Do you talk to any of the other neighbors on North Street?
Businesses or?
Yep. Um, I haven't talked to the businesses. I've talked to our neighbors, um, George and Jane, who live right next door. I talked to Rennie about it, of course. The big brick house, the people are only there maybe one weekend a year. Um, there's a girl that lives there, I haven't talked to, that she's sort of the housekeeper. And then there's another woman right on the corner and then the church is right there. I haven't had a chance to talk to them yet. Um, but I think as, as residents living there, it's, because it's such a short street, it's not like somebody has to go then go a mile out of their way to get somewhere, it really is just conditioning the traffic to create safer, better route for everyone to go. You don't have those close calls and people zipping past.
Rennie?
I just, the only person I talked with, I talked with one person on the board of the church and, uh, she felt that that was a good idea. She didn't see any, any, uh, problem with it. And I would just say from my own, uh, situation, because I'm on Meadowbrook Road, I never take a left out of Meadowbrook Road to go out onto Main Street. I always go right to come through the light so that I get the clearance through the light to get through. Um, so I, I never go the, the other way because it's so, it's so difficult. And in the days when I wasn't retired and I was going to work to Montpelier and I was leaving at six o'clock in the morning, I could go left because there was nobody on the road then, but after that, you can't do it.
But under that scenario, Rennie, you would not be able to turn right off from Park Street if that was one way?
That was the only thing.
I understand, I understand that. What I'm saying is to go home, you would not be able to go home from Park Street.
Right. I'd have to go all the way to North Street.
You would al- you would always have to go, you know, whichever direction you're coming from, you're gonna be out on Main Street taking a left on a North Street.
Right.
And so, one, you know, one of my biggest concerns with these kinds of things is, is solving a problem and creating three more, alright? So, uh, you know, I, you know, I understand, you know, what Rennie is saying, I understand what Shannon's saying, but I can te- tell you, if you, if you step back and think, "Okay, what is, what is really gonna happen here?" Alright? Let's just think about all of the vehicles that currently use North Street that runs both ways, alright? So what's gonna happen if you make that one-way street? So it means that all of the tenants of 96 Main Street, all of the patients of Dr. Conglotan, all of the patients and workers at Little City Practice and all of the residents, alright, will all, uh, uh, the only thing that they can do is access from Main Street, alright? And they have to leave by going behind the park, alright? So you're forcing all of that traffic to that location. So, you know, if you wanna, you know, if you wanna upgrade, you know, if you wanna upgrade North Street, I agree that it's narrow, alright? If you wanna, if you wanna upgrade a street, then we should talk about upgrading a street. I can tell you that, you know, there was a proposal to, to make North Street much wider, but everybody wanted to protect the park, you know, they didn't wanna chop another eight feet off from the back of the park so that you had, you know, parallel parking in two lanes of traffic, alright? And, uh, so, uh, you know, there's a, this is a, you know, this is a pros and cons, uh, situation, but I can, but let me just caution everyone that, uh, you know, you know, you think you're solving a problem when you're, when in reality, you're creating, you're creating problems.
Mel and I did a, a quick tour of that. We went out and we're looking at a bunch of different things and we walked that route and what are, one thing I've learned, you never walk with Mel Holly.
You can't keep-
A hundred miles an hour. I know I'm getting old, but, next time I'll get a go-kart and ride alongside. Anyways, long story short is, I talked to Tim Ryan. Tim was gonna talk to his truckers who deliver stuff to the building and see if it was gonna be any impact on them if it was made one-way or whichever direction it was. And then, I went and stopped at the doctor's office and on a very light day, they see 50 people, on a very strong day, they may see, and this doesn't include the, uh, people that work there, they may see 130. So that means you could see somewhere around 130 cars taking one-way where right now, that's not that, I'm not saying pro or, pro or con. The other thing that Mel and I looked at is, what are some of the other options in those areas that we could do to improve? Visibility at, uh, the north end of North Street, there's some things that could be done. Another thing that is, you could make that a right turn only so that no one would be able to cut across traffic because that's a, a binding point. I talked to Lynn about that briefly yesterday, I think it was, and just the fact that she knows turning left on Main Street at four o'clock in the afternoon is not a fun thing to do because you got traffic going both ways. So, uh, pro, and there, we, we looked at one area where there's some additional safety signs could be added, uh, to improve the, the safety. And I, and I think this is based, take, correct me if I'm wrong, um, is this more designed for the safety of both residents and people traveling in that area? Is that what the end results you wanna try to accomplish? Okay. Uh, Shannon, I'm gonna let you up just after, but I'm gonna have Jeff, I know he wanted to say something. You're after Jeff if you wanna add some more comments.
Mel, I'm curious what kind of data we would get from a traffic study, but left turn on, off of Main Street is almost impossible to do and I could see that really binding things up. But I, would we know, for example, how many left turns we get on Main Street and what the potential impact would be? I mean, are those the-
If you, you know, it depends on the scope of a traffic study, but if you did a real traffic study, it would include traffic count, it would be a, a book, if you will, of all, of all of the vehicles and which direction they're going, I mean, it'd be tables, it'd be all kinds of that kind of information. And it would give recommend, recommended, uh, geographical recommendations for that.
And also, would it include any potential pedestrian impact? Because I know that North Street on Main Street is very hard for pedestrians to cross, generally because there are cars in the middle of the crosswalk we're trying to get out. So, is that also the kind of data that we?
It would be whatever you asked them to do. I mean, obviously, North, North Street, you know, is, is one of the few streets that has no sidewalks.
Right.
Okay. It's just the way it is. I can, let me just tell you that North Street, where, where Shannon lives, uh, from Park Street to, uh, to Dr. Pecnel's office, it was actually one of the last streets to be paved in the city of Virgin's. When I, when I went to work for the city of Virgin, when I went to work, it was dirt. It was a dirt road. I think that Meadowbrook Lane was paved before, uh, you know, before, uh, North Street was, so really, it was one of the last ones. And I've, and I can tell you, it was really, really narrow. There's a lot of ledge outcropping there and, uh, so, you know, one of the things is there's no question that right now, you have a two, two-lane road that, uh, does not meet, you know, the minimum wayne, lane width, uh, for an urban setting, uh, which, you know, would be, you know, I wanna say about 20 feet would be about, you know, 24 is the right number, uh, but, you know, uh, so, I mean, a full-fledged traffic study, you know?
And how much does that cost?
Well, we would, obviously, we would go to TAC and try to get on their queue to get in, it would be a typical type of study that they could fund. What's it cost? 15 grand? What's that, Lynn?
grand. What's that, Lynn? I thought you heard, I thought I heard that.
I will say that three times this summer, I have been met by very irate drivers going the wrong way on Park Street. And I'm, I'm wondering if this might not also-
Well, I will tell you that, it's funny, Mike and I, although I was walking pretty fast, I'd pay attention as well. You know, what's ironic is, is that everybody, most everybody knows that Park Street is a one-way street, all right? However, the only sign indicating that it's a one-way street is up at the, next to the American flagpole, all right? There is no arrow or do not enter or anything. I'm frankly, I'm really, because if, if you, if you left Rennie's and you hung a left, I can tell you, a police officer can't cut your ticket. There's no, there's no notification. So, so one of the things that we need to do immediately is to properly sign the, that end of Park Street, you know, I, I hate excessive sign. I want to, I don't, I want to find out what the absolute minimum signage is. You know, I think that the right signage is two do-not-enter signs, all right? Which is ugly, ugly. But let, I'd have to look into that. But I think a sign at the end that says that, like, if it says one-way with an arrow, I think that's telling you. I think that should click. But there's no signage there. So that's, that's a minimum. I will, let me just tell you, back, the, relative to all of the parking spaces, it's, it's funny, I've, I've worked here for so, so long that I, I end up, it's just kind of, let me just tell you this story and you'll immediately say, that's something, that's crazy. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, I think it was, or ninety-five, the city of Virgin's got this huge Class One paving money. I mean, it paved, it paved from the bridge all the way out to somewhere, from the traffic light down Haven Road and out. And then later, with the help of Representative Landford, they were able to take care of the West Main Street. They, they were able to do a resurfacing money and turn that into a reconstruction, all right? Well, when they, when you have these paving projects, this was, you know, back when really three hundred thousand dollars would do a lot of, would do a lot of work. There was a million, you know, half, probably about a half a million dollars worth of paving. But when you do these paving project, it was complete with striping and signage and everything. Really, it was soup to nuts. And I can remember when the plan came down to resurface and re-stripe to code, all right? The amount of parking spaces that the downtown and everywhere was going to lose, it was a lot. And so, we negotiated all of these parking spaces, like, can we get one more closer to the, there was a lot of negotiating to get to what you have out there, all right? So, fast forward twenty years, all right? And we're saying, you know what, cramming all those parking spaces are great, but when you cram them so tight to an intersection, you end up with creating a, a visibility issue. And there's a reason why the, the geometry is such that the, the first parking space is thirty-three point eight feet from the intersection, okay? So, you know, certainly, you know, I, you know, and I, Shannon brought up the, you know, the accident, you know, the young, the young youngster on-
Jensen.
Yeah, that part, that, that part, that was on Park Street, darted across the road, got hit, all right? So that accident. But I don't know, you know, George could do an accident history. Sometimes intersections are so dangerous, you don't have accidents. I know that sounds a little crazy, but your people are just scared to death and they're just creeping out there. So you, I don't think you're going to find, you're not going to find big accident history there. You're just, people are mad, just kind of mad. So...
There's been a few there, but not, not many.
So anyway, my, my, my suggestion is, is don't do anything quickly. Don't, don't, don't think you can cure, don't, don't do something quick and cause a bunch of, bunch of problems. I, that's my, that's my real concern. I get it. I get, I understand what we're, that, I mean, there is this perception that there is some safety issues there and there's some, you know, geometry problems. I, I understand all that, all right? But if, to think that the quick fix is to make that one-way, I'm telling you, you're, you know, you're, you'll have a, you just head down that path. There you go. Let me just say that. You head down that path and so we'll see what happens.
Shannon?
Yes. I, I understand what you're saying, Mel. I'm not quite sure what you're talking about is the three or more problems that will come from this. I mean, I know the problems that I see is that change is hard in a small town, and people have to get used to then roads going in different directions and all of the changes that that can sort of create, like, who made this decision? Why are we doing this? Why, why, why even go there? And you're saying, what's the point? Let's talk about it here before we see it was even worth doing, you know? I, I think it is something that's worth looking into and spending the time. I don't know if fifteen thousand dollars is something that makes sense for something like this, you know? It's, but I don't think it should be dead in the water. I think that it's, it's an idea that's new and different. And it's something that could be good for the town.
Don't misunderstand me. What I think absolutely should be dead in the water, all right, is to just make a decision to make it one-way street and let's see what happens. That, that should be dead in the water, all right? Relative to, if, if there is a consensus of saying, you know what, really, this is a, this is a problem, we should study it, all right? I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any objections with that, all right? So don't, don't misunderstand, you know, don't misunderstand me. I feel I'm being clear.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, I want to have a fair go.
Yep. Just one of the things that you got to have a little bit imagination and, and think about, right now, and I'm taking an arbitrary number and I could be dead on or it could be off, you're going to add at least forty-five to fifty percent traffic is going to come your way.
Yep.
And, 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 you know, when we're talking, you know-
Anyway.
Any, anyways. And, and the other thing is making that one-way, I mean, not that they can't now, if, if it's a bind, at the end of the day, people already scoot that way that if they want to go to Northland or to Dog Kennel or somewhere else, they, they already use that access. So, yeah. So, but open for suggestions?
One more thing just about that. And in relation to that, that, yeah, I understand there's going to be more traffic going past my house, but at least I'll have a better chance because the, I'll have more room on the road when we're walking because there's no sidewalk. So it's like with my daughter and us walking, and if there's somebody that comes up that's scooting around at the end of the day, and then somebody come and barreling up the hill, and it's just like, I feel like we don't really have a fighting chance with those conditions. So, yeah, if the resolution is making the road wider and giving us a sidewalk, then, you know, I'm, I'm up for that. But I feel like it needs to be something that, and I will go and knock on doors and ask more people and do my part of whatever needs to be done to sort of investigate it. But I feel like it does need an investigation.
Let me just say, it's not that I'm recommending that we make all of our roads really narrow to slow people down. I'm not saying that. But I can tell you that if, if, if this section of North Street was one-way, all right, the speed, that there'll be an increase in speed, no question about it.
Just, just so that everybody knows, and Mel will correct me if I'm wrong, the lowest legal speed limit that can be posted-
Is twenty-five.
Is twenty-five miles an hour. Have somebody go twenty-five miles an hour on, on any of those type roads.
City, all road, all municipal, municipality cannot adopt anything less than twenty-five.
It's, it's, it's a law that is out of our hands. We can't change it.
Right, I just thought that was on the road like Main Street.
No.
And that it wasn't on a road that was a side street.
And that's one of the reasons why we don't put a speed limit signs on those roads-
Yeah.
Is because if you did, it's an invitation to go fast.
Right.
Lynn?
I'd just like to comment two things. I think it's great, actually, that people have to stop and wait for someone to go by because it automatically slows you down. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. But I can tell you, as Jeff can tell you, if you try to make a left-hand turn into driveways or onto North Street, there are going to be more accidents than we've ever seen before. Because there is times where, when literally you wait fifteen minutes to get out of a driveway, and people are going to try to cut. And they're going to go, and they're going to cut across, and that's when you're going to get it. I think that the, the easiest solution for at least now is to remove one of the parking spaces right where the crosswalk is.
On, on Main Street?
Right. Because you can't see anybody coming on that crosswalk anyway. And-
Your employees on the north side?
Yeah. So if, if that were, if that one space were gone, I think first of all, you could get onto Main Street safely. You could see the pedestrians in the street. And it also would give a, a little bit more, because there's a, in the summertime anyway, there's a little man or whatever you call those stupid things that are in, in the middle of the road, they're always in front of our driveway, that, um, say, you know-
Yeah, I understand those.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, you're also getting all of the major trucks coming when they're going south down to Albany. So you're getting all of that traffic, and that's all day long. So I, I, I think there was other answers, maybe, maybe a sidewalk, maybe reducing one parking place.
Well, as long as we're, we've reached the topic of trucks.
I added something because Jeff knows about it because he's part of it, Mel knows about it because he's part of it, is in October, there's going to be, starting of some communications meeting, talking about truck, truck traffic through Virgin's. We have a meeting with the, the people at Transportation. So this Diane Warren and others are, we're going to start some conversations to see what can be done.
But my other, my other last point is, if you try to turn left and you're held up, all of the, all of the traffic back to the light is also going to be backed up. And that is one of the troubles trying to get out of our driveways, is the line is so long, it's at the light, it's stopped, you can't go out, nobody lets you out. And I think there's a, there's big issues about doing a one-way street when you're trying to come in either direction.
Did a study ever get done on that stoplight as far as timing? They were going to do that. We-
You know, I mean, it's got lane detectors, Mike, so-
No, while there was going to be a, a study done, it has to do with the bridges, and they were going to do a study on that light to see if it was set right, or if we need to have some adjustment.
Yeah, I don't, I'm-
One of the ladies that there, the, the chair of the, whatever the group was, they, she said that they were going to have them do a study on that light to see if that timing needed to be changed. So.
Well, it has lane detectors, it has lane detectors on green and North Green, so-
Yeah, so-
You know, the, the, the only adjustments really is the amount of, the amount of yellow time, red-yellow. Those are the only things that are adjusted because if, if no one ever ca, it's just like Moncton Road. If no car ever came up Moncton Road again, it would be green on Main forever, all right? Because it's all driven by the lane detector that starts the, the sequence. And now, and then there is sequences about when is there another car that shows up with the next number of seconds. So there is some, there certainly is some programming there, Mike, that, that is involved with that. I do not know of any, any study of readjustment of reprogramming of that.
But there is a delay from that time that that goes back red to the time it's allowed to go green again.
Correct. There's a program.
Right.
But that's-
But maybe, maybe if it was lengthened or shortened, I think is what Mike is referring to.
That's the only time that pedestrians can use the crosswalk.
Right, right.
So you can't do it too short.
Did you have something, or, Rennie?
Well, I guess we're at the point of whether the council thinks it merits proceeding in some fashion. And the only thing that I can think of, and, and I think a lot of good points were brought up tonight about the possibilities and the traffic situations, that maybe we should contact the Regional Planning Commission and see what the possibility is for a study to be done, or, or for them to provide money for a study to be done. It had, it, it's not going to be a real big study. I don't recall what it cost when we had the study done at the intersection of McDonough Drive and Main Street. That was a, it's an extensive study. That was fairly expensive. That was done through Regional Planning Commission. And, but that was one that we knew that it had to be studied for possibly putting in signals. So it was, it was a big deal. And they counted all the turning movements for weeks and that sort of thing. So we knew everything about that intersection. This, I don't think would be as extensive, but I think by the comments that we've had, that probably if there was a logical next step, that would be it. Because there are, there are, you correct one thing and you do cause something else to happen someplace else. And we should know what that is before we make a decision on it. And the only way I think we can make that decision is to somehow get some data on it so that we know what the impact would be. I, at this point, I, I'm not so sure it would, it would do us any good to have the hearing of people who are affected because when they get in the room, they're going to ask questions about, well, what about this? And what about that? And how many cars are going to go in front of my house? And blah, 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 all that. And we won't have the answers. So, I mean, that's all I can suggest. I, as I said, I, I chose the, I chose the route to bring into the council first to see what your reaction would be. So, you know-
And I wasn't trying to be sarcastic. I was just trying to say, you know, what do we do first?
No, I know, I know.
Trying to get some directions.
Yeah.
Trying to get directions. Asked, what, what can we do first? That's why I went and visited a few people and just to get some numbers in my head to say, okay, you know, how many, are, are we, what are we impacting here? Some of, so that I can get some ideas, not that I'm steering it one way or the other. So really, we need kind of two pieces of information. What's happening at, at Main Street and North Street, that intersection? And then we would need to know also what is happening at North Green and North Street? Those are the two points? Those are the two active points?
Well, I mean, the reason that-
Or am I missing something?
I guess why I, why I'm thinking of more of a study is actually what Mel was saying about, when you make it one-way and it's all, all the way to Main Street, then all that, all the traffic that goes to the dentist's office, to the health clinic, to the apartment, has to go to Green Street. And that will impact Green Street. There's no, there's no two ways about it. It will, it will impact Green Street.
And the park.
And the park. So, the only way we're going to know what that impact is, is we've got to somehow study it and see what the impact is, you know?
Yeah, and they're going to have to sit in a position so they can see where people are coming from. Are they coming from around behind the park, by the water tower? Are they coming out of a dentist's office or out of a doctor's office or out of an apartment house? So, I mean, it's, uh... City Mayor J. Hawley, how do we go about asking, what do we have to-
It's a telephone call. You know, one of the things, I mean, I have absolutely no problem pulling out the plans and, and taking a look at the parking configuration at that intersection. I can tell you, there's, there's a little bit of, when you, there's a little bit of tree trimming that is involved there, too. I don't know if you want me trimming trees, but if you want to grow grass, I can trim a tree.
Ground zero.
Anyway, you know, I think that, you know, maybe, you know, like, for, for right now, like, trying to, trying to sort out what are, what are the issues? That's what I'm trying to, trying to get to the bottom of. What are, what are the real problems, Shannon? What, specifically, what are the problems that you have?
Um, the problems that I see with North Street as it is now is that it is too narrow to be a two-way street.
Okay. So there's one, so, so, so in essence, Shan, Shannon, and I'll get back to you in a second. So relative to North Street, Shannon believes that that street is too narrow to be two-way traffic, okay? So, the one solution to that is to widen the road, all right? That's something we could talk about, all right? You know, relative to the angle parking and all that, I mean, we could talk about that. But anyway, what, what's your other? You think it's too narrow to be, too narrow to be a two-way road? That's, that's one. Anything else?
Um, there is no sidewalk on the too-narrow road.
Yeah.
There is no stop sign down where North Street and Park Street meets.
Yes, there is. There's a stop sign on, on North Street.
No, there's a stop sign on which street? There's only one stop sign there.
Yeah, right.
And then there's no stop sign when North Street meets Green Street. So those two intersections are kind of like, everybody's like playing chicken when they get there.
Yeah.
People that come around Park don't have to stop, and they're flying either left or right. And it's so narrow, and you have that blind- either left or right, and it's so narrow, and you have that blind spot where the house is, that the church owns.
What's that?
It's yield by-
It's yield when you're coming up with the post office, and then it's, anything goes for the other three ways.
But Green Street, if you were to go straight into the nursing home, there's no stop sign there, and there's no stop sign coming off Park.
North Street.
Coming off North, I mean.
Yeah.
So those two intersections, yeah, they're-
It's just kind of weird, because every, people just look at each other like, what am I supposed to do? You know, and so it's one of those, so there's those like traffic-
Trust me, I thought, Mike and I were walking, and really, and I noticed that there was no one-way sign, I thought, isn't that crazy? Because none of us in this room ever take a left, because we know it's a one-way street, because remember this, we remember the sign on the other end, all right? But there should be, there clearly should be some indication that, that they're, you know, that it is a one-way street.
Yeah.
When you get to the end of Park Street, you know, maybe people should, I can tell you, I don't fly around that corner, I, you know, I'm, I'm creeping around the corner. So when you get to the end of Park Street, you know, there probably should be a stop sign, it probably should be a stop sign there, you know? You're at the end of a street, you know, I don't know how much, you know, basically, you know, it's, there are, there are rules about when an intersection is, is a three-way intersection, it deals with a 30% rule. There actually are rules about when, when a stop sign is required, all right? I mean, there's sometimes, you can have, you can actually have intersections, four-way intersections with no stop signs. It deals with the traffic count and the percentage of, percentage of the count, but that's something that, you know, whether or not that should be a stop point, you know, I suppose, I, I don't, there's not a lot of traffic there. What about the, about the intersection with, with Main Street?
So then that intersection, just like Rennie, I usually don't go that way, because pulling out onto Main Street-
Yeah.
-is an issue. I've never really experienced an issue of pulling onto North Street from Main Street, either across traffic, or right or left, onto North Street from Main. I don't commute that much, I don't, I don't drive that much, I probably fill up my tank once a month, because I just, you know, I walk to work, so it's really, I'm not the experienced driver that's in and out of those roads all of the time. But what I see when I'm on foot is that, you know, I don't, I don't know if the study would show that it would be too congested at Main Street and North Street if you have all of those people then entering there. You are taking away the people that are exiting there, so you're freeing up that side of it, so there's some takeaway and there's some gain, you know, on both ways. But I think that, you know, a study would show that number. I just know from my own experience that I think it's a dangerous intersection to pull out onto Main Street from, because people are traveling fast on Main Street, and they can't see you, and you can't see them.
Does the council want City Manager Holly to make the phone call, to see what it's going to do, do for, have a study done? What it's going to cost? Matt?
I'm going to stay out of the conversation, Mike.
Because?
Of David's property.
Property? Okay, no problem.
Yeah, the study would be fine.
Lynn?
I'm, I'm going to say, I think that we have the city management and the maintenance, Jimmy Laro's group, who could look at the situation, talk about a sidewalk, put up stop signs, if that's, we've, I mean, I think there's enough common sense here to do it ourselves, so I would say no.
Okay. Rennie?
Well, I would like to see if we could somehow get it done, and not be very costly, to have a study done.
Well, in favor of a study? Four, and study. So if you'd make a drop-in-
I'm going to go after a free study, and I'll report back to you.
Well, it won't be free-
Do you think if a stop sign required a study, or can we just stop at the stop sign?
Well, you really, you really, you know, you're not supposed to.
That's why, that's why I'm saying maybe Jim can just do it, I'm not, I don't know that we can. It'd be great, it'd be good, but I don't know that we can take away the parking and put up stop signs or other signs without somebody saying, yes, you've, you've studied this, you know this many cars are coming from this direction, you can do that.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we could put do-not-enter signs at the park?
Yeah.
On, on Park Street? At least one? Or something there?
Well, there should be a sign that says one-way. I mean, there should be, when you're coming down North Street, there should be a sign on the park that shows that Park Street is a one-way street, and I think that if you see a black sign with an arrow, I would hope that people know that-
Or if you have the one-way sign, you have to have it double-sided, so both people can see it.
Absolutely.
If you have the do-not-enter, you could just have it on the park side, and both sides would see it, so you'd only need one sign. Both of them aren't that pretty, but I mean, they're-
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
But that is something, we, we don't need any rules, regulations, guidance, we can do that ourselves without-
Yeah, because you're not changing any, you're not changing any configuration, you know? The stop sign, you know, what I am curious about, if I pull the ordinance out, actually, in Virgens, unlike other communities, their stop signs are actually part of their ordinance, and that's not the way in Virgens. Like you won't, you go to, if you pull up Middlebury's ordinance, or Burlington, Burlington's traffic control, it speaks about speed limits, and bus stops, and stop signs, and yield signs, all of those are rolled into it. In ours, I really don't believe that there, we have a stop sign, a set of stop signs, and that doesn't necessarily mean therefore you can put them up wherever you want. I mean, they really, they should be supported by a traffic study. I don't think it, the, the law says traffic study. I don't know that it says by a traffic, transportation engineer, I think it just says a study.
Just answer me one question, then. How did the stop sign get put on Green Street and?
Victory.
Yeah, Victory. How did that get there?
I wasn't city manager at the time.
I wasn't either.
There you go.
Those, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whether I should say this, but in my opinion, both of those stop signs are illegal.
I think so, too.
They are, they are, they are stopping a secondary street when it's, the secondary street is the one that should be stopped, not the primary street. So really, those stop signs, in my opinion, were-
What, that one was the other?
Were, both sides of Victory. Both sides of Victory.
Oh.
Yeah, it's on Maple and Green.
In my opinion, those stop signs were put in for, for, for speed control, which is not what a stop sign is supposed to do, so.
And that was also put there because a person got killed in that intersection.
Absolutely. In the death.
Yep, you, you don't see people flying in-
And they were speeding, and-
But that doesn't make it right, that doesn't make right, wrong, or indifferent why it happened, I, I just, it appeared, boom.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, there's either rules, or there's no rules.
And I think if you look back, and it's before my time on, and any of the councils and, that I've been on, but that, that sign appeared, those signs appeared. And I, I'm just surmising that that was part of it, you know, somebody had it put there, and I don't know why. So I, I don't know if there's a way to research that.
What's that?
Those, those signs that are on-
I'm just trying to justify what you were all saying. You're saying we can't do this because, and I want to know, how can you do this if you're not doing this? That's all I'm trying to state my point.
No, I agree, we're, we're a hundred percent.
You're very valid with that point.
Yep. So, so is there a way to research that other part on Green Street, to see if that's illegally, illegal, and?
No, I don't want to say it's, I don't want to necessarily say it's illegal, let me just tell you what the, I'll tell you what the regulation is. The regulation for a three-way stop is, is based on whether or not the traffic count is, is inside of 70/30, all right? For a four-way intersection, to, when, when, when there's an intersection, and let's say that you have an intersection where you have one street that is through, and two streets that stop, okay? So that intersection, when the traffic counts at a four-way intersection, get to a 60/40 ratio, all right? When it's 61/39, the 61% don't, doesn't have to stop. But when it gets to 60/40, when it gets to 60/40, 59/41, that is the threshold when a four-way intersection should be, based on a trap, that traffic study, should become a four-way stop. It has to be in, in that 60, within that 60/40 ratio. Relative to a three-way stop, the ratio is 70/30. And I can tell you that, that you don't need to put, you don't need to put a traffic counter on Victory Street to, to conclude that there is not even close to 30% of the traffic. That sign was clearly put there for speed control, and the city council directed that sign to be put there, not based on, not based on the criteria that it's supposed to be done.
Matt?
Back to my point.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please. The topic at hand is the one-way-
I'm sorry.
-at North Street, so.
No, we're getting off, but, okay, no. So we'll get back to the designation of, we're going to have, we're going to, you're going to research a study, and you're going to get back to us.
I'm going to contact Regional Planning to see the process to study that section of North Street.
Yep, no, okay, good question. Good, good, we're going to do that. So that moves on to number C, review of financial management questionnaire. Who does that? You, Mel, or Joan?
That's Joan.
This is the new law, this is the third one I've done. We have to do this now, and present it to our city council, every clerk in Vermont, or treasurer. And it's more about transparency, so you understand what I'm doing with money, and who's touching what, and, so if you have any concerns with it, you, you can talk with me and, and see what is going on here. I don't like that setup, or, so that's what State Treasury's office came up with, that we have to start providing these. It's all for transparency purposes.
Any questions on that? I've already signed that, right?
No.
No? I thought I signed a copy in your office.
No.
It needs to be reviewed by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to present it to the board, and then you have to sign off that the board received it.
Looks good to me.
And my auditor asked for it. You're supposed to do this at the end of the fiscal year.
Any questions?
Two turns down, question, does the town have written policies and procedures for financial operations? And we have a note. Is that something we might want to have, written policies and procedures?
It's a process. Some towns have them, you know? It's, it's huge, 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 to, to put them in place.
So it's, that's a term of art somehow? We, I don't know, it just seems like, otherwise-
So let's say that the superintendent's, let's say if the superintendent's office has a, such a written policy for financial operations, you know, that'd be good, that'd be a good look at, because if it's a simple, because I, there is a problem, there is a situation, is that, you know, Joan and I, we've been working there forever, all right? So we, there's a, you know, there isn't, we don't go to a manual to say, Linda, how do we pay a bill? You know, there's a process that we, we just know, but that's not written down anywhere. And it is problematic, for all of a sudden Joan and I get hit in a car, and you got, you have no procedures whatsoever as to who does what. That's, that's absolutely true, all right? Now, solving that problem, you know, let me, let me just tell you, we don't have time to write that book, because we're, we're too busy doing the work that we have to do, all right? So, but if there was a, you know, that's, it's, it's not, there's not an easy way to get that no over to the, to the-
Yes.
I don't think it's easy.
Does anybody want to volunteer to go out on the internet, see if they could research something, or write something that may satisfy that, to move that to a yes?
I can actually talk to somebody at the superintendent's office, we have a new business manager, so she's hot on the trail of a lot of other stuff, so she might be able to put me in the right direction.
So-
PLCT, I'm sure, would have probably templates for that type of thing. And it's not that we're totally devoid of policies, I do recall that over time, there have been various ones about investments and, and that sort of thing, so we, we have-
We do have an investment policy.
Okay, so, Mark, you going to do some research on that?
And it's, it's also interpretation, how deep is this question?
Well, that's kind of what I meant, is we have nothing for-
When I read it, policy and procedures, it would start out with, like, from the minute, who goes to get the mail? Who opens the mail? And then it goes to whose desk? And then who codes it? And who writes a check for it? And it's very explicit, very, very, but we just do what we do, is what we've done for years. And it might not be a bad thing to-
So like, for instance, obviously, if you, if you were to read down through here-
I just didn't know if this was going to be like, an auditor coming through saying, what do you mean, you have absolutely nothing written about how you run finance? That seems problematic, and so I-
And they never, they never flag them.
Okay.
Never.
So-
They ask us what our procedures is.
So one of the things, I would, I would, you know, as, as, I mean, I read down, let's say if I was a city council member, and I went down through this list, you know, there's some of these that I would read and say, yeah, you know, that's probably too bad, it'd be nice if we had such a, however, if I ran down and it said, our bank statements reconciled on a regular basis, and said, don't know, you know, I, I wouldn't think, timeout here. All right? So I think when you read down through this, it really-
That's the only one caught my eye.
That's the only one? That's good, perfect.
Any other-
We'll look for the template.
Anybody have any concerns with any other items on the, on here? If not, do we need a motion to prove, or?
No, I just need you to sign off, and no, then it was dispersed to the city council.
The city council has received the copy, a point was made, and it's going to be investigated. So, okay, next D, municipal planning grant.
I don't have anything for you in your packets about a municipal planning grant, and let me just tell you, if, if I didn't have to sleep, I can tell you what we would apply for. We talked about this at the planning commission meeting the other night, and we also had a meeting at the, were you there, Rennie? Who was at the meeting with Diane and Claire?
No, I wasn't. Jeff was there.
You guys were there, okay? So, we talked about a lot of things, but did we talk about McDonough Drive and sewer, and potentially doing some additional planning? You know, we're in the midst of a planning study right now, which is really about our sewer lines, and I'm concerned that the, that although this will be a valuable study to get all that information together, to know what we have in the ground for sewer lines, I still have, you know, a lot of concern about our weak point, which is the McDonough Drive pump station. And, and so what we talked about a little bit at that meeting, and we talked about at the planning commission meeting last night, was whether or not we could apply for a planning grant that could just focus on McDonough Drive, to do some really preliminary engineering, to look at that, because the real problem that we have, hopefully people didn't just get up, just get up from the dinner table, I'm about to tell this story here, but the biggest problem we have with the McDonough Drive pump station is rags. And because rags get there, we have two different impellas, one of them is, is a, an impella that does not work very well with, with rags, and the other one actually will chew them up to some degree, but it, but actually it, it has a lower amount of flow that comes out of that. So to, to me and others, the key is to keep the rags away from those pumps, all right? Don't let them get to the pump and clog it up, because that's where we end up, to some degree, with some overflows. And I, and I really think that if we had better rag control at McDonough Drive, or a great big million-gallon tank, all right? I don't, you know, you can, there's different directions of trying to reserve the capacity and then send it through the pump, but I, I really think that, like, it wasn't that long ago, we had an overflow, and I hate to say, use the word only in the same sentence, with 118,000 gallons of sewer, or, you know, flow that's, that mostly rained, but it's still untreated sewer. You know, I really think that had those pumps been able to not have to tolerate the rags and be able to, to pump all of that to the wastewater treatment plant, we would have been fine. And so that's, I think, you know, we're under the gun to, to not have overflows within 20 years, and we're a year and a half into this already, all right? And I just think that that, a focused study on McDonough Drive, what can we do to make sure that that pump station is pumping to 100% of its capability, without any obstructions, be it rags or otherwise, to me, that's, that's, you know, one way to-
There are devices that will chew those things up, they're called muffin monsters, but I don't know if they could handle the volume that we're seeing at this point.
So for tonight, you know, I, what, let me tell you what I would like, is I would like the authority from the city council to apply for a planning grant- to apply for a planning grant focused on the McDonough Drive pump station. Now, the way that the system works is the planning grants used to be 100% funded. I think they were up to $15,000, I think. I don't think there was any local share. I mean, it's just, they were $15,000 grants. Now, they're $8,000 grants, are up to $8,000 is 100% funding. You can, anything over that, there's a formula, like, so, let's say, if it was 20, I don't know the formula, but let's say that it's a $20,000 planning study. The first eight is covered, and then the next, the next 12 is covered, you know, 50% or 75%. So, what I would like to do is, is apply for $8,000 to study that, if we can, if I can get an application in by Tuesday, all right?
I would ask for motion to authorize the mayor, the city manager to apply for said grant. And we have it by, and I, who said second? Did I hear? Rennie seconded it?
I'd also add that if you need any assistance, Mel, just let me know. I'll...
Appreciate that, yeah, good.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carried. Sewer rate increase.
So, we have a, about a year ago, we raised the sewer rates from $87.50 to $96. And the budget that you adopted, if you do not do anything with, with rates, it provides with a projected, I think it's either $6,000 or $8,000 of red ink, all right? And so, increasing sewer rates is, you know, if you want to avoid red ink, you gotta do something with, with rates. Or you gotta amend your budget or do something. So, the next quarterly billing Joan will be doing on October 15th. So, you have one more, one more meeting before that billing. And I, I know Jeff and Mark, go ahead, get your, get your I told you so's out, you know, to the rest of everybody, me included, all right? So, anyway, you know, obviously, I can tell you, we bill out about $700,000, I think it is, Joan, right? $680 or something like that. So, if you, if you just do the math, you know, I mean, it's really, if you're billing out six, if you're billing out $680,000, you know, 1% is $6,800, all right? 2% is $13,600. But keep in mind that we've already missed a quarter, all right? Don't, don't forget. You can't, you know, you're one, a 1% or if a 2% increase does not get you $13,600, because we're, we're already three months into, into the year. So, you know, so basically, I think that you're, you're at an absolute minimum. You're looking at going from 96 to 98. No, no question about that. The question is, really, you know, do you want to deal with this every, you know, you want to deal with this every three months, or what do you, what do you want to try to do? I will tell you, when you look at our budget, you know, we are not, we are not funding the capital reserves to a degree that, well, just go to, let's just go to the budget. If you turn the page...
A question on, on that, I just lost, lost my train of thought.
What are you thinking, 100?
A minimum, a minimum of 100, yeah.
Does, does the delinquent sewer tax have any effect on this?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
None, no. Doesn't work, it doesn't work like...
No, so they show as receivable?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, like, when you look at the, when you look at the sewer budget, page seven, and you see that we're only allocating $40,000 a year for biosolids, which, you know, used to be 50, that's 40, that just deals with cleaning lagoons. Sewer line replacement, 20,000, which is like nothing. And the capital improvements, we're not budgeting anything in this current year. So, and if you, so you got, you got a, you got a revenue budget of 662, and you've got an expense budget of 680, all right? So, you've got an $18,000 delta there, but you had a $10,000 surplus. And 10 of it, in its essence, is eaten up, all right? So, it's not like you haven't, if you're kind of trying to think, okay, how many years ahead do we want to think, all right? Do we want to think, do you want, if you're, do you want to try to set a rate to get you to June 30th? All right? So, it's, that's what it is. It's two bucks. You go from 96 to 98, it'll, it'll get you there, all right? And then you'll be, you'll be visiting this in, in, in June.
Which is, baby steps is not a bad thing?
It's okay, yeah, yeah.
Funds for a system that is...
And as the person who does the billing, I think you're better to lock into a price and let it stay there for five years, 'cause people are having a hard enough time with $96 versus 96, 60 at the water district. And so, if we go up to 98, and then, again, 100 the next year, I think it's easier on the people to lock in higher, where you think we're gonna have to be, and, and just lock in there and stay stable for five, six years. I mean, we went years and years and years on the 26, 19 a month, or whatever it was, I mean...
The big bump up. I remember the big bump up, because I was here.
And you did the study.
And we did a big bump.
Yeah.
But it lasted for eight years or 10 years, or something like that, so...
Yeah. That would just be my recommendation.
Matt, what are you thinking?
Do we have the ability to pay in monthly installments?
Anyone can send money. Some people do an online that every month their bank sends me 2916, and it gets applied to their account every month.
Because it feels like we need something closer to a 10% increase than a $2 increase, so closer to nine and a half, something along those lines. So, we're not having this conversation again in June and Jeff...
Is even that gonna be, we went to 10560. Are we looking at a couple of years out before we're doing this again?
105...
10560 would be a 10% increase. Two, the first $2 is just gonna cover us to June. Now, we're looking at about eight bucks, seven and a half bucks, that's gonna be, is that gonna fund anything within our, the different systems that are not being funded now?
So, so basically, if you just go to, go to page, go to page six, towards the bottom, you'll see where it says user fees, penalty and interest miscellaneous, all right? And I, and I wanna, I'm gonna say, don't concentrate on penalty and interest, because really, I don't like the fact that it's $10,000 that we're making in penalty and interest, because that number is because we have $33,000 in delinquent sewers. I wish that we only had $15,000. It doesn't, at the end of, it doesn't really matter at the, at the end of the day. But don't, don't, like, if all of a sudden, everybody became current in their sewer, you wouldn't have $10,000, you wouldn't have $10,000. So, I want you to concentrate only on the 652. Concentrate, let's just call it $650,000. So, $96 raises $600, $650,000, all right? So, if you were to have, let's say if you were to, it's a little more than 4%. So, let's say if you went to $100, all right? So, that's 4 point, whatever the number is, 4.1. You multiply 4.1 times, times 650, all right? So, that is $26,000. So, now you got, so if you went from 96 to 100, it gets you $26,000. So, now you've got 662 plus 26 is 682, all right? So, 26 is 688, all right? And you got a budget of 680, all right? So, so really, when you go to $100, you know, you, you, you really haven't...
So, if we went to, that's four plus, so if we went to the 10%, is that gonna be something where we're gonna start being able to put money into the different funds that you're saying are unfunded right now? Or is that just gonna be, in two years, we're gonna have this conversation as opposed to in one year? Is 10% gonna be enough, even though it's a big percentage? Are we so far behind right now that we need even more than 10%?
Well, you know, at one of the meetings, I'm gonna get back to that question. At one of the meetings, I showed you our debt schedule, all right? We have a debt of $123,400. I think that there's, I should have gra, I should have grabbed it. I think there's like five years left in that. So, the, I think the question, let's say that the goal was, say, listen, what we want to do is we want to raise the rates one more time until we're, until we're out of debt. Because the year that you're out of debt, you know, I'm gonna, I won't be working here, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be suggesting that you, that you drop rates by 20%, because you're, you're, now you can, now you can really start funding your, your capital needs with that newfound 123. So, why don't, let's, let's, what I'd like to find out is the consensus of the group, all right? Because I, I don't know that I'm hearing that. So, obviously, here's the options. You know, if you want to say, listen, let's, we need to get ourselves out of the red ink, all right? That's some pretty simple math. I can, I can calculate that for you. If the majority of you say, we want to get these rates here, and we want to make sure, we want to, not say make sure, but the goal is that this time, when you raise rates, it gets you to the day that you're out of debt, okay? If that's what you want to do, let me get prepared for you, so that I bring you that. So, I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna end up doing a five-year projection, if you will, of a particular rate against a, against a budget. And that will get, if that's what your focus is, to say, listen, let's get a rate to the point that we're, when we're no longer paying that bond of debt.
I'd like that number.
Two head nodding. Do I hear, see a third?
I think that's what they wanted me to do last time.
Mel, are you there with them?
I agree.
Okay. Mel?
Okay.
So, well, projection, five year.
You got it?
Okay.
It may be six. It all depends on this debt thing. It's five or six.
Yeah, it might be six.
Yeah, all right.
So, we need to be prepared to vote on that at the next meeting, though.
Yes, yes. It has to be done, because they, they need to...
We're gonna be billing three days later.
Three days later.
Absolutely.
Understood.
Yep. Quick and fast, implementation of credit card.
I'm ready to go with PayGov. It's a month-by-month contract, and we just give each other 30-day notice if it doesn't work for us. I did talk with the auditors today about what's been their experience auditing. Does it complicate things for them? And they said, no, because most municipalities, it's not used enough, because the fees are charged back to the people. But it's all about the convenience. For those who want to use it, it's available.
We need to put...
So, I'm ready to go.
Okay, go.
At the last meeting, I think they, there was like, we're just, you just go.
Yeah, because it's not gonna cost us.
The word is go. We just need to get the word out to the public. So, either front porch forum, get an article to, or something to Andy, but...
Yeah, I can put it right in my sewer bill.
Okay.
Do they provide the swipers and all of the stuff and programming and all that stuff?
Yeah, no fee to us, no charges whatsoever to us through PayGov.
And then in three months, we'll tell you how the accounting's working, okay?
Well, Mel's concerned. June 30, every dime's not gonna be in there, because my money won't come for a day or two.
We'll see.
Let's, let's, let's try it. Again, it's a 30-day notice. One of these, there is a case, nothing gained, nothing ventured. Hopefully, it'll work out well. Okay, that takes care of that. Downtown basin master plan implementation. Mel's got the books. Everybody, hopefully, had, had the opportunity to scan through them. There is a lot in there. Priorities.
We're trying to, I, I'd like to do is figure out who owns this thing. Who, huh? Right? Who owns it?
Luck with that.
Okay. We, we've got this plan, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, either, either it's the planning commission, it's the city council, or it's a partnership, or, you know, somebody's gotta, you know, somebody's gotta own it and deal with it. There you go.
Well, my suggestion...
Very, that's good. That was just, he just wanted to talk. That's all he did. The hand is up, so he can get his...
My suggestion is to reconvene the advisory steering committee group, and let them kind of bat around the best way for the implement, implementation strategy. I think that, you know, if you look through the document, you'll find that the partnership has many, many, many of the tasks that need to be carried out. And that doesn't mean that the partnership has the money to go and do these things. It's just that the partnership is supposed to be gunning it along, making sure that people are paying attention and doing something. So, the partnership already has a particular role, but, but I think if that group got back together, they could then determine the full strategy of what, what we should do, and who owns it, basically.
Sounds like maybe you and I could get together if you agree, and figure out how we start something again?
Get this back on the thing?
Yeah.
Does sound acceptable to the council? Okay, move right along. Municipal dog park, that all fell underneath part of that implementation plan. When I can get a volunteer, I like to grab the moment and get some free work done. And had a, had some offer from the people over in Northland to help clear any land that would need clearing, and...
You're talking about at Falls Park?
No, I'm not talking about Falls. I know that Falls Park is mentioned in here.
For a dog park.
For a dog park, my only concern is, being that we are so restricted down there on certain areas of being able to do certain things, I think that land becomes more vital to do other recreational events, needs, and try to save that rather than for a dog park and use it for picnic tables, other recreational stuff down the road, than putting up some fences to, for, for the dogs. And I think that we have other property within the city that could be looked at. I had a discussion, I had a, I mentioned it to Lynette, and that wasn't received well. I think they're doing, thinking about doing something with their land now, because, and the accessibility to the property. And I found out a piece of information, which I don't believe I'm supposed to share, about the, the property in which we were gonna go. There was some plans being made. I'll say it that way. Just can't share those with you at this point. If you want to, one-on-one, talk to me, that's fine. So, it's just, I, I put it, I had it put on just to say, hey, can, can we start if we can think about, we talked about having the police station out behind, on New Haven Road. Is, that land is just gonna sit and sit? Is there a possibility that might be considered at some point? And I don't need an answer tonight. It's just, I'm just trying to, food for thought, or if somebody else has some other ideas. One of the parks that was brought to my attention has two fenced-in areas, one for large dogs, one for smaller dogs, so that the, the, the small dogs don't hurt the larger dogs. So, okay, so enough said on that. Let's move right along. We're gonna go to I, amendment of city ordinance, chapter four, section seven. Mel?
So, I handed out in front of you, this is actually the entire section seven. And when I was reading through it, I, part of this, I wanted to clean up a little bit. I did not realize that the current ordinance states that no person shall by himself or his agent cut, dig, up, remove, destroy, or injure in any manner any part of a public highway, sidewalk, gutter, without the permission of the city council, okay? Because I can, I can tell you that we have not been following that law for probably 40 years, all right? Because, and I can tell you, if you, if we did, that's all that you folks would do, is, is deal with permitting somebody to plant a tree in a, in a, right away. So, one of the things I wanted to do is to, is to clean that up, and so that it says that the city manager, that's what, that's what I, that's what I've been doing. The second part, I know Lynn, at the last, a couple of meetings ago, we chatted about this, and I wanted to just get it right in there, in writing about grass clippings, I, and this is, if, if we wanted to have an ordinance to really control what people do put within the city right away, or on our streets, or on our sidewalks, this was my attempt at language, alright? And, and I think Lynn, this is really what you were thinking of, that you'd like people to stop doing.
That's good. I just don't want it to go into the catch patients anymore, I want that to stop.
Yep.
And that's, and because we changed ordinance, I gotta be the devil's advocate here, how is that controlled? Does that then go back to the city manager, or who does that go to, and how does that get, is there a fine involved?
Well, there, there certainly could be, but, you know, the way that, you know, the way that, you know, this ordinance, like lots of ordinances, it's an awareness factor, and we, you know, we wouldn't just go, we write tickets, we would let people be aware of the, of the, of the ordinance.
Okay. Any comments? Anybody wanna make a motion to adopt this as it is written?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Lo made the motion, Rennie seconded it.
So, try anything, hold on, hold on, hold on, I think that there's a.
A 60-day, isn't there a 60-day?
Well, it's, there's a 14-day, I was reading it today, it's about the law, like, if you adopt this, see, I don't think you are required to have a hearing, you adopt it, and then, and I have to put it in the newspaper.
And then it has 60 days.
And they, and it goes into effect in 60 days, but I think what it, I think, I should, if somebody's got a phone in their hand, they can, it's Title 24, Section 1972, it will tell you, let's see how quick Jeff is this here, so, Title 24, Section 1972. Because I know there's, there's a, the 60-day, it goes into effect 60 days from the night of adoption. I know that it has to go in the newspaper, and I think it has to win the newspaper within 14 days. And then there is a permissive, there is a referendum, so somebody could petition to have this being voted on, I think it's within 30 days of this action. So, I think that there's, I have to do something within 14, it's posted in five public.
Newspaper within 14 days.
Okay.
Name of the website, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
Explains citizens' right to petition for a vote.
That's part of the notice, yeah.
Yep.
Unless a petition is filed, it becomes effective within 60 days.
And when do they have to file it within?
What petition?
Strangely, it does not say.
It must be within 60 days.
Petition law.
Okay, well.
Probably does.
Okay. Okay, so if you approve this, if you approve this as written, then it becomes part of our ordinance, and I put it in the newspaper, and it becomes official in 60 days.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
There was a motion, Joan?
There was a motion, yeah. Lo made the motion, Rennie seconded it. Okay, and we're going over J and K delegate. VLTC is having their town fair next Wednesday at Killington, two-day affair, we're looking to see if anybody is going other, Rennie said he's going, is there anybody outside here on the council that is going and wants to be a delegate? Rennie has volunteered to be a delegate.
That's like the meeting on the fourth, right? It's just.
The, the, the annual meeting is on the first day, the Wednesday, and some programming, and then the, most of the programming is on the third, on the Thursday.
Yeah, I was hoping I might be able to grab a ride with you and go down on Thursday, I can't go down on Wednesday.
Have you signed up, or?
I have not, I wasn't, I just emailed Rennie a couple of days ago, saying, are you going? Cuz I'm trying to figure out automobiles and children.
Yeah, cuz I don't know if I'm the one, either, if I do, I pay at the door, whatever, but.
I already registered, and I'm gonna go both days, so I'll be the only one then from, for Vergens there on the annual meeting, so I guess I need to be the delegate.
Anybody have any problem with Rennie being there, our delegate?
Yeah, it has to be, I think it has to be voted.
Make a motion? He made a motion, Jeff seconded it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, moving right along, fire contract, Mel.
Yeah, what I, what this is about, I left a couple of things in front of you, there's something on the back and something on the front, and then there's an email exchange between me and Pam, and I just, as you saw there, I, I had this intuition that there was something wrong with Ferrisburg's numbers, and unfortunately, I was not able to get this confirmed prior to when the city council adopted the fire department budget and the revenue stream. And so, what I'm looking for tonight is to authorize an amendment to the, the revenue budget of the fire department breakdown for the four towns. I'm not suggesting that we change the, the total, but I want the, I want, I really think it's important for the, for the budget, the adopted budget to line up with the contracts that we have with these towns and what they pay. Because if you, if they don't, it, it actually messes up Joan a little bit with her billing, and it makes it, it would make it look like a town is actually delinquent when they're not. So, I mean, seldom do we ever have to do this, because the numbers are firmed up before the start of the fiscal year, but this year, Ferrisburg wasn't able to get them firmed up for me. So, I'm, I'm looking for an authorization to amend the, the, those four revenue lines in the fire department budget as outlined on the revised breakdown.
Motion by Rennie, seconded by Jeff, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? City manager hallway.
So, there's a budget report in there, it's, obviously, we're still pretty early, early in the year, there isn't anything jumping at me at this, at this point, but it's early. Hasn't started snowing yet.
Any questions on the budget report? None? Capital improvement, special fund report?
So, so the only fund that we have removed from this report is the fire truck replacement fund, and so that's no longer showing, and that actually got transferred to the fire department fund, fund balance, that $10,000 and some change. And so, you can see now, this report is actually showing fund balance June 30th, and revenues and expenses that have occurred since the start of the fiscal year, and you can see that, you know, that we really haven't spent, you know, one of the things that's a little, you know what's, one thing that's just wrong here is, if you go down to Vergens Recreation Events Funds, the, that $1,800, all of those numbers really should be in parentheses, so I just caught that, that, under Water Tower, if you, if you had 208 and took in 50 and spent 15, you don't have 275. So, those three numbers really should be negative numbers, so we'll get that corrected for you ASAP. We have frozen the, any more money going into the records computerization, actually, some money got in there, but Joan did a journal entry back out, right, Joan? So, that, that $55,570 is frozen.
Where is it going?
It's just sitting there. What's that? Oh, in a Clark face. So, like, the $10 per page, Lynn, that we charge, we were, prior to July 1, we were putting $6 in the budget, $1 into records restoration, and $3 into records computerization, and now it's nine and one. And that's why, that's, that's why the line item in the general fund went from 18 or 19 to 23 or 24, to make up for that extra money. And I, and I will tell you, you know, my, my goal is to plant some trees and get rid of the 2146. My goal is to do some kind of work, paint the railing or something at the pump house to get rid of the 436. And those are the only two others that my goal, just as it was last year, was to spend the money and get rid of them.
Any questions on, Mel, on that?
And you will see, notice the Otter Creek Basin Fund, you know, it's not like money burns a hole in my, my pocket, cuz it doesn't, but, but anyway, you know, one of the things, the Otter Creek Basin, you know, I mean, this report, I really think, you know, the city council should, should look at this and, and be thinking about what, what should we consider doing with this money? You know, the Otter Creek Basin Fund, we're collecting that from boaters, you know, what is it, it's not doing anybody any good sitting in the bank, so.
One of the suggestions that came from a citizen is the possibility to look on the McDonough side and to put some more picnic tables, maybe a swing set, something where the boaters could get off and enjoy some recreation of some sort, whether it be a horseshoe pit or whatever, but that was a recommendation that came forth, and.
And some better ramping, too, there's, there's a problem with the ramping to get to the floating docks, particularly on the McDonough side.
Well, Rennie, I'm sure that your, your advisory group will figure out some way to spend $61,42.29, I would, I would hope.
Mel, that's, that's the other thing, too, because I think the, another thing that we need to be looking at is increasing our dockage, but I'll talk about that in a minute, so. Any questions of Mel? Other topics of interest, Mel?
Nope.
You don't wanna say nothing about South Water Street?
No.
What do I, what do I wanna talk about?
South Water Street?
We're doing sidewalks, we started a sidewalk project on South Water Street, is that what you wanna talk about?
No, just, just letting people know, we're gonna start biting off some sidewalks.
Jimmy has, Jim has, you know, if you remember, the planning commission was involved with doing this sidewalk inventory and everything, so, and actually, the number one, one of the, as far as new, new sidewalks, if you look at that report, I should share it with you again, the first one speaks about connecting the sidewalk from, from Hillside Acres to, to Hopkins Road, and the developer did that already, so that one's checked off, off the list, so, so anyway, Jimmy's off, he's, I don't know how far he's going down South Water Street, I don't know.
See where the money takes us.
House, but, but anyway, they're.
From my house, it's fine.
Alright.
A lot of sidewalks, sidewalks are.
Yep, so he, yeah, they started that, they started that yesterday.
I figured people would wanna hear about that one.
Obviously, tomorrow and the next day is not gonna be fun in the city of Vergens, with, when you close one lane of the Otter Creek Bridge, so, everybody should, so Michelle, if you're thinking about popping across or bringing somebody home after school, I would tell, they're on their own, it's, so.
The, the longboats are tied to my brother's dock, and I don't think they're, they're off, I think they're easily accessed, and I think the oars are right there, so you may get a fast lesson on paddling.
Okay? That's all I got, yeah.
Okay, good, I'm gonna fly through mine. Local option tax, again, just in, get it back out to you people, is it time? Everybody around us has it, there's some pros, some cons, we should talk about, and it's, it's a lengthy conversation, tonight's not a good night to, to do that. Okay, alright, I just wanna start getting some stuff out, I'm doing some more investigation, so I have a better understanding of what effect it has.
When you think it's prudent, then that's great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get it on the next agenda. Swimming pool advisory group, again, they have some recommendation, I just don't want that to die in a corner, there's some expensive projects that we need to consider as, as a, as a city. Roof needs some drastic attention, I don't know if the people have been reaching back to you about the caulking?
I did get, I did not speak to the folk at NiCom, but he did leave me a message. I know that both those contractors are up to their neck in work, but my, you know, my goal is to, you know, get this caulking done, obviously, I'll be back in touch with the board, money-wise, cuz there's no, you know, we're gonna need an allocation from somewhere to, to do that, but hopefully, we'll get that for you for the next meeting.
Okay. And, alright, there's other things, but I won't labor on that one right now. I passed out to people evaluation that I gave back when I was mayor of the city clerk and city manager, really would like some input, is that sufficient, do you want something different? I know everybody's extremely busy in their job, just would like some help on where this is planned this year, we're not meeting what we're supposed to do and give them a evaluation, but next year, I'd like to get that back on track with everybody's help. Next item, number of vessels this year, 537, that's, last year's was 333, 2015 was 640, so we still got a little time left with the weather, boats are still coming in. So, next item is, here's Rennie, Eat on the Green.
Yes, well, hopefully, most of you know that the, there's an event coming this Saturday, it's from 3:00 to 9:00 on the city green, and it's Eat on the Green, it's a food festival, and it was, it was inspired really by our own restaurants, and as a matter of fact, they took a key role in a lot of the, the planning of, of it, and so you're going to have entertainment, three bands playing from 3:00 to 9:00, Bruce and Hobbs will be there, the restaurants that are, have booths for you to get food are Bar Antidote, Three Squares, Black Sheep Bistro, Hired Hand, Park Squeeze, Daily Chocolate, Lulu Ice Cream, Lincoln Peak Vineyard, Basin Harbor, Shacksberry will be there, Ferrisburg Bake Shop, all of those will have kinda booths on the side of the park, and then there will be a, not a tent, but a enclosed area for alcohol, which would be predominantly beer, it's gonna be a beer garden, and there will be, there will be games for kids and adults there until 9:00. So, hopefully, entry is free, you buy tickets as far as what food you wanna get, and, and what you wanna buy as a beverage, and that sort of thing. And this is the first time that there's been an event held that will benefit, any proceeds would benefit the four major nonprofit groups in the city. We all decided to get together and, and work on this, so it's the partnership, the Opera House, the Bixby Library, and the Boys and Girls Club. All of those are the beneficiaries of any, any money that might be earned from this.
Okay. Please take one, pass it along. This next handout has to do with Vermont Community Development Association, they're going to be holding a conference in November, I realize I'm really early, but I just, everybody's calendar fills up so fast, I wanna put this out, it starts like 9:30 in the morning, some key speakers will be coming to, to talk, and I think it's just a piece of good information, and hopefully, everybody can attend. So, I wanna, I just got this email today. Next meeting is gonna be October 10. We are having a meeting on the 10th, earlier that day, on truck traffic, just so that everybody knows, this has not died in a corner, we're gonna be pursuing what can happen. And one of the most important parts of my announcements tonight is a certain city employee, Melissa Wright, is celebrating a special year this, this year, so I wanna wish her a happy birthday. I know she's having fun tonight, and I told her I was gonna do this, and she laughed, she's, so, and next, Lynn, wanna make the motion? Alright, and Jeff seconded it. All those in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Be quiet. Well, not too bad. Well, not too bad.